...of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen.
Roll call please.
Mr. Wexler, Mr. Rogan.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Mr. Gahn.
Here.
Mr. McGough.
Here.
Let the record show that Mr. Wexler did inform us that he would be unavailable for tonight's meeting. Dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, tax assessors' report, for hearing date to be held October 16, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3B, agenda for the Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting, held October 8, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3C. 3C, tax assessors' results report, for hearing date held September 17, 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed.
3D, breakdown of eligible salaries for the liquid fuels account for the months of July, August, and September 2014.
Are there any comments? If not received, then filed. Any notes?
No, Mr. McGough.
Any announcements from council?
Yes, I have. New World Troop 16 spaghetti dinner is Saturday, October 18th, from 4:00 to 7:30 PM at the Marer Memorial Center of the Hickory Street Presbyterian Church at 427 Hickory Street in South Scranton. The cost is $10 for adults and $6 for kids 10 and under. Takeouts available. This dinner is the Troop's primary fundraiser for the year and helps offset the costs of for badges, ranks, camping trips, and other things. Thank you.
I would like to, first of all, thank President Mark Volk and the staff at Lackawanna College for allowing us to use this beautiful facility while the elevator is being repaired at City Hall. It's greatly appreciated and we're happy to be in this building. Some of us who are, some people who were graduates of Scranton Central High School and revisiting. The other thing I would like to announce, this Sunday is the 19th running of the Steamtown Marathon. Somewhere around 3,000 runners will start at 8 o'clock in the morning at Forest City High School and wind their way through the valley, mid-valley, arriving in Scranton at about the 22-mile mark, and the last four miles or so, three or four miles in the city of Scranton. Streets will be closed for part of the race, so if you are traveling into downtown, know that, you know, some of the avenues and streets may be, may be closed at certain times. The race usually finishes somewhere around, the last runner's somewhere around 2 o'clock. That's a rather long marathon, but usually the downtown is then cleared by about 3:00. So, just be aware, it's a, it's a great event, as I said, somewhere around 3,000 runners, and I know for a fact, most of the hotels, motels, et cetera, in the area are filled with families and friends of those participating in the marathon. And that's all.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, Scranton. I want to talk about Item 70, which was introduced last week, and it's the contract with Pennsylvania Fire Recovery Services LLC for the period September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2018. I did try to do some research on this item in the past week. I did call my own insurance agent and learned that these fees have existed for some time. What is new is having an agency collect for the city of Scranton. But I learned other things, too. I learned that Pennsylvania has banned similar fees for police services, so this would only be fire. But I still have some concerns about it because, naive as I am, I thought when I paid my taxes in my EMS-LST tax when I was working, that I was basically buying or paying for essential government services. I mean, that's why government exists. It provides essential services which citizens cannot provide for themselves. Among those are police and fire protection and garbage collection. And that was my understanding. And that's why, you know, I was surprised. But then again, you have to look at the history of the garbage fee, you know, which we charge our citizens for, that apparently is not covered by the taxes which we pay. I personally believe that, yes, we do have to pay for those services, and those should come out of taxes. We should not be creating fees. I think when you create a fee, you take the spotlight off of the taxes, which is a major issue for all cities. Basically, government is supposed to serve and protect, not serve and collect. But that's where we're heading to right now. It also brought up the issue of some of the arguments I heard about commuter tax. And as I recall, one of the arguments for having a commuter tax was the commuters were getting the advantage of emergency services. Well, hush my mouth. Do you know that if a commuter is in a traffic accident in Scranton and the fire department responds, that driver's going to be billed? So, you have to ask yourself the question is, why were we imposing a commuter tax if they were also paying for those fees? Granted, they weren't paying a police fee and a garbage fee, but yeah, they were paying for fire protection, just like any other citizen. If I was in an accident in Clark Summit, Scranton couldn't bill me. I don't know whether Clark Summit would have billed me, but not Scranton. So, I just have a little bit of heartburn about that. It's almost like a backdoor method of helping to balance the deficit for Scranton. I know you're going to pass it. I just want to go on record as saying, it seems to me like it's son of garbage tax, and that's what you've created. For what little time I have, is there any update on the status of the mayor's budget or the audit? Are we getting any closer to an audit?
They have been working on it. I don't, you know, I'm not aware of what the status is at this time, and there have been discussions in the administration on the budget.
Are you expecting the budget to be presented to you by your council meeting on November 13th? Will it be after that?
It has to be by the 15th.
Which is a Saturday.
I'm not sure what the time schedule is for the administration.
Because you're bumping it up against Thanksgiving and other issues, so hopefully that'll be done. And I note with, even though this is a beautiful building, and I graduated from here in 1967, I note with regret that when Lackawanna College remodels the Scranton Center on Adams Avenue, and that's a block that's coming off of the tax rolls. It's too bad we couldn't have gotten a for-profit agency to have taken over that block. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fay Ferranas.
Fay Ferranas. I just, I want to address a couple of things. I'm just, when I saw the newspaper the other day about the $8 million deficit, and then I saw, what I believe maybe I'm wrong, $2 million in raises. I'm sure the contract raises, there's nothing you could do about. But I just think that, you know, like they say, if Mary only had three apples, you can't give away four, she can't give away the four. My point is, if you don't have the money, I don't understand the city's willingness to give anybody a raise. I guess just other ones that aren't in the contract, like firemen and police, nothing you could do about that. But as far as giving like Bozoni a raise and anybody else in the administration, how do you do that when you're taxing people right out of their homes, the senior citizens? You know, and Mr. McGough, you kept on saying, "We can't go bankrupt because we could just keep on taxing senior citizens." Everybody, not just the senior citizens, but they're the ones that really struggle. I don't understand how you have the nerve to keep going to the taxpayers. It's like if you went and bought something and sent me your bill, like, "I didn't cause it, why should I pay for it?" This is just, this is out of hand, and you're supposed to be representing us, not, not the people, excuse me, that are getting the raises. Okay? Like my house value, and Wayne, you know this, my house property value has gone down considerably. Because for one thing, I couldn't give my house away. People don't want to come in Scranton and buy a house because of the taxes. So, all of us homeowners, we can't even get out if we want to. So, what are we supposed to do? And Mr. Rogan, you said last week that now you can go after that commuter tax because now you met the criteria, because we got this 57% raise. I mean, you seemed like you were proud of it last week when you spoke. But you should be fighting against more taxes for the people. I just don't understand how you all have the nerve to raise taxes a one penny, considering 57% last year and the garbage fee increase. And I think you should do something about that garbage fee. Senior citizens that have one bag of garbage, and like myself, I have like two bags, if that, and my next door neighbor has five cans, no, come on. And you don't think, and Mr. McGough, I mean, I know, you don't have to worry about things because you have a good pension coming in and whatever, social security. But many people in the city don't. But because you don't have to worry about it, I guess you don't think that you should care about them. You're supposed to be representing us. I don't understand where you representing us comes into play, because so far you haven't represented us at all, and you keep on saying, "We'll just go through the taxpayers." And that's all you keep on saying, "We'll just tax them, tax them, tax them, that way we don't have to go bankrupt." You should be going bankrupt. I mean, you should be ashamed of yourself. You're going to do whatever you want to do, and we, that's why nobody's here, because they know there's nothing they could do because you don't care what we think. You never did, never will. Same with Dave Bozoni. You have that thing in the paper today saying that he's helping the city. Wow, he's the same Dave Bozoni that had that loan from Landmark Bank when he worked there that council never approved. And Landmark Bank is going to court now with the city, and they shouldn't even have to be in court because the city council never approved it. Council members read about it in the paper the next day, that's how much they knew. So, we should not be in the hole for that, and that's the same Dave Bozoni. And you're saying the people need raises in the administration because you need those kind of paychecks so that you'll attract more intelligent people, more qualified people? The mayor, is he qualified? Did the mayor have a college degree? I believe he only graduated from high school, didn't he? Does anybody know up there, or tell me you don't know? You really don't know if the mayor has a college degree, Mr. McGough?
I don't believe he does. You'd have to ask him to be sure.
Well, I'm sure, I'm pretty sure he doesn't. He ran a karate school and he graduated from high school. And this is the kind of intellect that you want running a city. So far, he hasn't done one thing to help the people. He hasn't gone to the nonprofits, for one thing. He hasn't gotten concessions from the unions. What has he done since he's in office? I don't understand one thing he's done since he's in office, not one. He doesn't answer questions because he doesn't know them, he answers. And he hires other people, like Amaroso, to do work that he's supposed to be doing. Amaroso never went to the nonprofits, he never got a penny. So, what did we hire him for? And you're also hiring that other firm till 2018 with no cap, and that's illegal, but you said it wasn't, but it is illegal, that he's getting paid because there's no money in the budget for him until next year. So, you're paying him not, retrospect, he's working now, he shouldn't even be working now. I've discussed it with before. You gave that, you approved that at council, and it's illegal. We'll see later on in court. Anyway, that's all I have to say, except that you should be very ashamed of yourself, every one of you, each and every one of you, for taxing, and coming to them again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Elman.
Well, council, I may not have a friend left up there, but I got a lot of them out here anyway that put you in those seats. I wasn't even going to come tonight, I was so disgusted with your choice of location for this meeting. I bet you, you wish I'd stayed at the tourist club instead of coming, anyway, but this, this is the very people that have been stealing us blind on our taxable property. I just, I think it's deplorable to have a meeting here with these people. You know, I'm not going to go into it, but this, this is just, this just rubbed me the wrong way. I, I don't want to get in trouble using bad words about what's going on and get thrown out of here tonight. Anyway, what I really, I just absolutely disgusted with the school board. They just completely out of control. When they have to go to the state to rape the public more than they usually do, it's, it's time for something to be done about them. There's not a one of them, that whole bunch that should be sitting there any longer. You know, 6.6, that doesn't hurt me any, but I've talked to a couple of people out there, it's going to kill them. And you guys know it. They know what they're doing, and to use part of this money to threaten people's homes to buy a bunch of iPods is ridiculous. How many of them are going to be lost or stolen or just traded for dope or whatever? And then who's going to have to pay for them? More taxpayer money. You know? If somebody wants an iPad, let them buy their own. If they can't afford one, let them borrow one. They just got to quit coming to the taxpayers for everything like this, you know? Standing up here and, every week, it's the same thing. I listen to these people, I listen to them talk outside of here. It just doesn't stop. The city's going downhill, it's such a spiral, and nobody, it's right under your noses and nobody wants to say nothing, to do nothing. There's just, there's nothing being done for the, for the people of the city that put you in those seats. You know, I, I don't mean this as a bracket, when I just said $70 or whatever it was, won't hurt me, but I've talked to some people, they've lost part of their food stamps, and they've lost this, and lost that, and sold this and that and everything. For what? Mr. Amos's plan to raise more taxes? Sometimes I think it must have been his idea to use this place, he's been so adverse to the city. I don't think any of you read the letter from a young lady in the paper last Saturday, but it says it's time to do something about the university, this Mrs. Cavill, P.A., I can't see it, P.A.R.D. But I wish you people would see this letter and read it. It's sincere, it's what everybody keeps telling you week after week, and you don't do nothing. You know, the only one that was up there since Ms. Evans lost seems to be Mr. Goggin. You know, you seem to be in touch with the people, but like I said last week, it seems like you're in one circle of friends and family and acquaintances, and a third or maybe just a quarter of the city are in another, but they need your help so bad and they're not getting it. You know? There's going to be a, we've lost, what, 4,000 houses in foreclosure? In the paper a few weeks ago, it was 1,200 pieces of property in the city and the county. I don't remember how many was in the city, but there's people that just can't afford it no more, and I don't know, something got to be done to save the city, but you're not doing it. You people just aren't doing it, for God's sake. Well, I thank you for letting me vent my anger. I'll go back where I was this afternoon, make you happy over there. I'm not mad at you. Thank you.
Why am I getting headaches, then? I think you're putting the pins in that doll.
Maybe it's my perfume I got.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the best. Joanne Hicks Griffin.
Mr. President and members of council, I had come before you today because I believe I was inspired to come and share this with you. I read the Old Testament and the New Testament, and this story about King Asa and King Jehoshaphat kind of tell me about you. King Asa was going into battle, but he didn't have enough forces, so he came before his god and he said, "I am unable to do this battle, but if you go before me and fight for me, I will overcome. Could you acknowledge your weaknesses in this situation in which you find yourself in?" Next, King Jehoshaphat. He went before the Ammonites, the Amens, and he too had a lot of group of soldiers, but he lost because an ambush occurred and his troops were killed. There is power in weakness, and you all up there are members of the human race, just like me. And there come a time when we must acknowledge our weakness, our inability to solve the problems at hand. Our country was founded on Judeo-Christian principles. If we're going to accomplish anything, we have to realize that without God's help, we will never succeed, never. Now, I have some suggestions. Tax, oh, sorry.
Just back away from the microphone a little bit.
I'm afraid that nobody's going to hear me.
No, they will.
Tax colleges on the buildings that they use to make a profit, such as the science buildings, the business, the economics, the math, and the biology. I think that would be able to be done, I think it might be lawful. Two, charge for dumping in city dumps. I was at the top of Wood Street in North Scranton, walking the baseball field, they have two of them at the top of Wood Street, and I look over and I see the UGI dump truck dumping dirt in that property. And I wondered if they are paying the city of Scranton. I called the mayor's office, and of course, the secretary told me he wasn't available. I'm not surprised. Then she said, "Well, maybe I better put you in touch with the legal department. It sounds as though it might be something pertaining to the law." Jason Shrive came on, I talked to him, and then all of a sudden, he vanished. And on the phone came a young lady, and she told me, "Well, I'll have him call you back." I says, "Really? I was very doubtful of that, because I do not think the citizens of the city of Scranton are paid attention to. But you're lacking in a lot of information, a lot of intelligence, if you do not listen to the citizens of Scranton. So, I wonder if charging for dumping in the city of Scranton might be a way to make money." The police, firefighters, and union members should be paying into their pension and for health coverage, since most people in the city of Scranton do not have the opportunity to be treated like kings. Drop the tax on homeowners who try to improve their properties. If they're taxed for doing something on their property, what harm, what is that doing? It's only causing properties to be blighted. For, as you well know, I think next to Florida, the city of Scranton has a large member of seniors. And lastly, veto the raises. It's not possible. And finally, for love of justice, which we pledged allegiance to, to the flag, for liberty and justice for all, our citizens need to be treated with justice, not just the union members. I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Jackowitz.
Good evening, Scranton City Council.
Good evening.
Members of the audience. When you borrow money to pay off a loan, are you really solving anything, or are you just creating a bigger and a larger loan? I think you're just creating more debt. This is the reason why the city of Scranton has been distressed for 22 years. This is the reason why I come here, week after week after week, because we fall into the same trap. The city of Scranton, the elected officials, and the administration falls into the same trap. We're doing the same things that we did 10 years ago, 12 years ago, 15 years ago, that caused us to be where we are in 2014. And here we are, we're going to do it all over again. This is the reason why I harp and I try to put blame on the people who are at fault for this. I've been coming here for 13 years, basically, and I've been saying the same thing for almost 13 years now, but nobody listens. The people who are responsible for the city of Scranton, being in the position they are in right now, the city council, the business administrator, I mean, and the city controller, who's been there for 30 years, and three mayors, we've had three mayors, okay? You are the ones who passed these ordinances, laws, loans, so on and so forth, and you're getting ready to do the same thing all over again, and we're going to end up deeper in debt, and we're never going to get out of debt. So, again, if you borrow money to pay off your debt, are you really paying off your loan and paying off your debt, or are you creating more debt? And as far as the raises go, take that $25,000 that you gave the mayor, take it back, take that, that loan that you gave the business administrator and the rest of these people, and take that back, and city councils should take a 50% pay cut themselves to show the people of the city of Scranton that you really care. Quit taxing the people, the people cannot afford it any longer, okay? You're just creating another larger debt and another larger loan, and, you know, lead by example, set the example. You're the leaders, you're the elected people, you're the ones who campaigned saying you weren't going to raise taxes, and you weren't going to do this, and you weren't going to do that, but yet you turn right around and you do it, okay? Except for Mr. McGough, he's straightforward, he tells people he wants to tax them, and he's happy about taxing them, because I think he's voted for three or four tax raises since he's been there. He hasn't voted against one yet. I'm not sure if Pat has or not, okay? The rest of you haven't voted on tax increases yet. But hey, don't tell us you're not going to raise taxes and then turn around and raise taxes. Don't tell us you're working for the people when you're going to go Don't tell us you're working for the people when you're going to go around and you're going to raise fees and raise taxes, and you're going to give city administrators and elected officials raises, which you should know that you cannot afford to give to them. Okay? Okay, now, the $4 million, it says it's going to be repaid from revenue from parking meters. Can someone tell me how many years that's going to take? How many years of revenue from parking meters will take to repay $4 million? Can someone please answer that for me?
I don't have the amortization table with me.
Can you... Will you have it next week and promise me that you will give me an answer?
I don't know. They haven't negotiated that yet.
Well, it says that. That's how you're going to pay it.
Yes.
So how can you... So how are you going to pay it if you don't know how you're going to pay it? Can you promise me you'll have an answer for me in the next month of how much revenue will be paid from parking revenues to pay back this $4 million? Will we get $4 million in parking revenue?
We get about a million a year.
So you're saying in four years?
Possibly.
Can you give me a definite answer in a month from now?
If I have it.
Well, you should be able to have it. It doesn't take long to find out. All it takes is a little legwork. That's all it would take to do that, okay? Again, we never get answers. All we get is spin, more and more political spin. That's all we get. It doesn't take long. All you got to do is put a little time and a little effort into it. Because I already have the answer. And that's all it takes. It's a little time and a little effort. You ran to be elected, saying you were going to support the people and work for the people of the city of Scranton. Not just the Doherty people, not just the elitist. You're working for all the people. At least, that's my belief. Okay? Okay, why was the mayor not at the meeting on Tuesday night? Is he not the chief executive officer of the city of Scranton? Should he not be at a meeting when you're discussing finances and you're discussing taxes and you're discussing commuter taxes? Should the CEO of the city not be present at that meeting? Does anyone have an answer for that?
We're not the mayor.
I understand that. Why wasn't he there? Was he invited?
You would have to ask him.
Was the mayor invited? Was the mayor invited? It's a simple question.
Mr. Jackowitz, I can't speak for the mayor.
I'm asking you, if you invited, as president of the city council, did you invite the mayor to the meeting?
We asked the administration to be present.
Okay, so he turned you down. So your answer is the mayor turned you down. That is your official answer? That the mayor turned you down and refused to attend the meeting?
Mr. Jackowitz, don't put words in my mouth.
I'm not. I'm asking you to put words into your own mouth. What's the answer?
And I gave you the answer.
Okay, your answer was, he was invited and he did not come. That's your answer.
He was not at the meeting.
Wow. Wow, 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 wow. Citizens, I hope you're listening to this.
Lee Morgan.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I just would like to say no to 5D on borrowing. It's pretty... It's self-explanatory. Mr. Evans, sir, have you set up an arrangement with Mr. Ozzy Quinn, the head of the Hill Neighbor Association, to do walkthroughs of the hill for private residences to take a good look at, you know, faulty porches, lack of repair, you know, anything along that line?
No, we have nothing set up to do that.
Is it planned?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Not that we wouldn't do it, but there's nothing planned at this point.
Okay. You know, my name's Lee Morgan. I'm on Facebook. I want to make people aware of that tonight because I really think that Scranton government, to be quite honest with everyone, elected or appointed or that works inside government is so seriously broken. There needs to be a 30% tax cut in order for this city to even begin to turn itself I've started laying the groundwork for recreating the neighborhood associations to cut the ability of political insiders to manipulate things that are going on in this city for decades. I'm very troubled. I have received some feedback from some neighborhood associations. I think that Scranton's government is so broken that it just can't be salvaged. I mean, you sit and you listen. And we're talking about a commuter tax. We're talking about a community that has been distressed for 22 years. We're talking about... I'm talking to people. I talked to a gentleman today. I forgot his pay stub. It's at home. I apologize for that before I came to the meeting. He earned $66,000 and he paid $2,300, I believe it was, in city tax, more than state tax. And he handed it to me, and he said, "Lee, I'm done here. I moved out. I'm done." Okay? We've created a situation in the city where we're creating more blight than you'd ever imagined. We're giving money to organizations creating rental units when people don't live in rental units in the city because we've created ordinances trying to go in and condemn as many of them as we possibly could. I've asked to look at the book for the condemnation book. You know, and it's not just this administration. I mean, I did write to knows. The right-to-know law doesn't require me to do that. It just requires that I could ask council. I don't have to do anything in writing to the right-to-know law. You may not agree, Mr. McGough, and I appreciate your candor on that. But you know, the other thing is, why not answer some questions here? People come here for years, decades. You know, I stayed here once before, that I got here late. Mr. Clifford recently passed away. He was here for decades. This city hasn't turned around at all. We keep electing people, nice, like I say all the time, nice suits. But you know what? Suits don't think, people do. There's no thought taking place, not that I can see. Because if we're going to keep talking about raising taxes and then out of the same mouth speak about blight, I mean, where do you think people get their earnings to pay their taxes? Where is the great economic engine of Scranton? Does it really exist? And at what point does your populace reach a point when it can't pay the taxes you're asking for? Is there ever that point? Or have we elected people to government that believe that they can sign anything they want, and they don't serve us? The problem in this community and across this country is the government isn't working for us. We're working for them. I hope Mr. Wessler was here today because, you know, look at the North Scranton project. How did they get rental vouchers to complete a project that's been so heavily funded by the state or the federal government? And then, where is the community development money that could have brought a lot of these properties inside the city up to code and really helped with the blight in the neighborhoods? Where did all that money disappear to? These are the elected officials who went to neighborhood associations, and not only this group, but prior ones, and said they were going to represent the neighborhoods, represent the people, and do the right thing. Hasn't happened. And I think what needs to be done is, new neighborhood groups need to be established, and the next election will get rid of two. And the election after that will get rid of three, and then the mayor will go with them. And then we'll put somebody in here that will take this city into receivership and show leadership or bankruptcy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Miller, Scranton. You know, a lot of good points have been made this evening. Woman this evening, and I apologize, I don't remember your name, but I want to commend her for coming forward. You know, listening to her today this evening, it was a pleasure to hear many valid points that she made this evening in regards to a lot of the issues taking place. I thought Mr. Jackowitz made a lot of good points, and particularly in regards to 5D on the agenda. Here we go again with the mindset that we think we can, you know, borrow to get ourselves out of debt. And that's ultimately, that's led us where we are today. Because we excessively borrow and think that's the way you get out of debt. But common sense tells you that's not the way it works. But the one thing that really just disturbs me tonight is, we're going to entertain legislation, and I understand it's only for introduction, but that's besides the point. We're introducing legislation this evening, and yet, we don't know how long it's going to take to pay back this loan. And that really frightens me, and it should frighten a lot of people because I think it really says a lot about the incompetence that we have throughout this city government, whether it's at the level of council or right at the top with the mayor, because that's where it starts. You know, you take a look at what's going on. You know, we heard that sacrifice needs to be spread throughout the city. I think the residents of this city have sacrificed an awful lot through the years. I think you've done a good job sucking the life out of them, and now with our attempt to take it outside of the city. You know, listening to the opinions of council members who, you know, we heard opinions can be wrong but never be false. You know, evidently, a judge determined that that opinion was false. You know, we have a council member who believes that their opinion is more relevant than a judge, because a judge determined that what you wanted to do in regards to Act 205 was illegal. And yet now, stubbornness wants to take place, and now discussions are occurring of possibly appealing this decision made by the judge, or considering going after the Act 47 version of the commuter tax. And I just stand back, and I just have to ask myself, you know, how delusional can we get? It's really frightening how delusional our elected officials are, as I sit and just listen to the, you know, rhetoric every week. Take a look... Just take a look around the city. There's no opportunity. You just have to walk out these doors and go outside. You know, we talk about a thriving downtown. There's no economic opportunity here. People are fleeing this city on a daily basis, as I've said, and we're not doing anything about it. We're actually causing it through overtaxation. You know, I hate to say it, but if this council isn't willing to cut the budget 30%, you know, I think it's a pretty safe bet to say that the residents of this city are going to take quite a beating come budget time because I see a 70% or 80% tax increase unless this council and administration are willing to actually take some serious reviews of this budget, which I'm very doubtful that you will. Because we continue to just follow the advice from consultants and people outside of the city, such as Mr. Amaroso, who are just leading us down a path of destruction. It's already been proven with the latest ruling in court. Now the idea of selling assets, is that really the avenue we want to take? Where's the creative thinking process in our government? There is none. We unfortunately have a very ignorant, self-serving government who, a speaker mentioned earlier, you know, we talk about getting answers to questions and respect. You know, it's hard to get answers to questions from people who don't have any answers. And we haven't had any answers around here for a long time. We have a mayor who only understands one thing, that's chasing police cars and fire trucks around town. That's not leadership. I mean, it's comical. It really is. And we really think we're productive and we're getting somewhere. We have a delusional council. I have respect for Mr. Goughan because he's separated himself from the majority of this council on many issues, and I do respect him for that. Because it takes someone with an independent mind to do that. And we don't have too many people in government like that. And that's why we're in the position we're in, because politics has absolutely destroyed this city. It destroys everything it touches. You know, we talk about receivership and bankruptcy. Of course, that's not where we want to see the city head. Are we proud to discuss that? But at the end of the day, I think we need to let reality set in, and we need to realize that that's where we are right now. We can talk about selling assets and all the fairy tale fictitious plans out there. But until we show some real leadership, I don't understand the reasoning why we should have any optimism whatsoever. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address council?
Yes, council, good evening. Marie Schumacher.
Good evening.
I can't help but be pained by just being in this building because I remember how it was torn down and the comments that were made about it when it was being closed and practically given to Lackawanna College. And then taking a tour during my last high school reunion and hearing the virtues, the acoustic perfection of this auditorium, for instance, the marble steps. It just gives a bad taste of all elected officials that seem to do exactly what they want to do and get their own way and to heck with the average person. Now on to business at hand. I agree, I don't think 7D is good legislation. I think that it's just putting it off on insurance rate hikes. And so instead of you guys collecting a tax, our insurance property rates will go up. And that'll be everybody, whether they have an accident or not, because you get enough of those, and that's exactly what will happen. Now, moving on to 5D. I have a question on whether or not that was really legal. I think apparently, the city, the administration, and you, council, believe in that adage, it's better to apologize than to seek approval. Because I still would question whether the members of the Scranton Parking Authority, the new members, were actually members when they voted on their reorganization. And if that was invalid, does that not make what they're doing with this $4 million loan invalid? But even beyond that, I was at that Scranton Parking Authority meeting when the Landmark people were there, and they were happy. They did put some things down. So apparently, they believed that the parking revenue that the authority was going to glean in the coming years was sufficient to pay that debt. So if that's true, I think they should have to eat it. Why are we coming back now to the taxpayers to cover this private loan? They believed that it was possible. And I would like to see that back up certainly before you vote. Because you're taking a big chunk out of our operating budget. And then guess who gets to pay again? The property tax owners, probably. And I don't think that's fair. You had a business come in, they knew. I asked that question at that meeting. If you look at the minutes, they were perfectly aware that this loan was not going to be come to city council for the full faith and taxing power of the city. I think we should hold to that. They should have to eat this. Then, my next item is, I would like to know from each of you, and Mr. Wexler maybe next week, if you think there is a maximum combined property tax rate? And if so, what that might be? Do you have any concept of how much of a person's wealth, the continual rental that we must pay for our properties to the county and to the city and to the school board? Do you have any idea how much that would be?
In a perfect world, it would be zero. Unfortunately, that's not the case.
No, the maximum rate. What would you... What would your ceiling be?
We're certainly very close to that ceiling currently.
How close?
Overall. The school district portion, obviously being the largest portion in the city, was the third largest.
Okay, well, thank you. You do it in motions.
Sure.
But I would like to hear that from each of you. And then, last week, Mr. McGough, or maybe the week before, but I think it was last week, was talking about street lights. And I was not able to bring the article, but I will bring it next week because there is similar savings to be had in street lighting with LEDs, as was touted for that Electric City sign. And so if we're going to do anything, we need to go the max, make the investment and have the LED light so that our operating costs and maintenance costs go down over time and not more of the same. Next, the quality...
Finish.
Okay. The quality of life legislation that you're talking about, Mr. Evans, I have a problem with that. Can you tell me, too, one thing, who you're modeling, what city you're modeling that on? And who's... And that will tell me who the enforcers are going to be. I don't think our police... We don't have enough property inspectors as it is. Our police have better things to do than walk the neighborhood and tell somebody their grass is too high, or they have the wrong furniture on their porch. And that really... I think you need to consider whether or not it's going to be an unenforceable law. I can remember, I live on East Mountain, we have... I mean, you can tell when the weekend's here because all the all-terrain vehicles come doing their wheelies up and down, 11 o'clock at night sometimes. And you call the police... o'clock at night sometimes, and you call the police, and they say, oh, sorry, we don't enforce that, because they can go faster than we can and get away, so it's pointless to come out. Well, then, kill the ordinance.
Okay.
And don't add another one that's not going to be enforceable, or is going to switch what should be done to being neighborhood police of my law.
Yeah, I feel it could be enforced. I mean, it's modeled after the Hazelton ordinance, which is modeled after the Redding ordinance, which is modeled after the Allentown ordinance. So the fact of the matter is that it's being enforced very well in Hazelton, and Allentown, and in Redding. It's working very, very well in all those municipalities. Public officials are basically inspectors, police, even the firemen can enforce it, you know, when they have an opportunity to do it. So that is always the case when you pass laws, will they be enforced? And this one, I'm confident will be, because the truth of the matter is, we need to enforce it.
Okay.
That's something that, yeah, we'll talk.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
President of Scranton. I've recently been advised, as of today, it seems like we have two microphones on here, that my escrow is going up $55 a month. So as far as raises are concerned, due to the fact that the working class has been taken the hit for years, getting reductions in pay, no raises for anybody, period, unless they're previously legislated. No way. On 5D, I could say, well, I guess maybe it's more trouble not to pay that bank than to pay them, but I'd love to see some legislation making it never again possible for anyone within the city to get or give a loan. And if they do, they should be barred forever from serving at the city of Scranton as an As far as the business privilege and mercantile tax, well, back in my drinking days, the last place I would ever go by is the mercantile, the merchant section of town. Now, why would that be? Because it was loaded with police officers that would have been more than happy to arrest me for how much I consume. I can no longer drink, but the point being that they get way more police protection and amenities from the city than what their taxes that they pay, at least I feel, and nobody deserves a tax cut when you're talking about raising the rest. That's all there is to it. Tax-exempt property in our town, general dynamics. I was talking to a neighbor who has a relative that works there, and I was told that only a skeleton workforce, as far as the blue collar section, works there at this time. And they very possibly lost defense business from the US military to NAFTA. Now, NAFTA was my idea, because I heard that years ago they had to bid against Mexico and Canada. Why are we doing that? Why did we ever do that? And now, once again, we have a tax-exempt property that's paying nothing towards the city, and now they're hardly even employing people. On 6J, the trash. I knew a detective that I used to talk to, and his car was in the public works garage for about 12, 15 weeks, over a simple job in a mechanic shop. And I have to question, do we really need to spend that type of money now? I've worked in truck garages, I've worked in car dealerships, and believe me, a good mechanic is a lot better than a new truck, because a new truck will look pretty damn old if you have a lousy mechanic on it. So it's about time that our public works gets their act together with repairs. And a lot of letters have appeared in Scranton Times about the commuter tax, and I didn't really feel it was fair. I supported it because of our 33 percent tax exempts, and 11 percent are unable to pay their property taxes, and some may be unwilling. But at any point, if it ever does come to fruition, and you're from outside the area, you can thank all the people that donate every election to Scranton politics. At a tune of, I think it was the mayor race before last, or two races ago possibly, there was a million dollars donated, and much of it was from outside the city. So if you're so concerned about paying taxes, then tell your friends to stop the donations. And once again, I'd like to remind everybody to get out and vote. And keep in mind that the PA government, the current government, and Assembly, PA Assembly, has done next to nothing for Scranton. So hold them responsible. Thank you, and have a good night.
Anyone else who wishes to address council?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Ms. Robey?
Yes, thank you. First, I would also like to thank Lackawanna College for hosting us here for the next month or so. We certainly appreciate their hospitality. Next, and I don't want to steal the thunder from Councilman Evans, but we did meet, Councilman Evans, myself, and Pat Hinton met with the chief of police and the mayor of Hazelton regarding the quality of life ordinance, and I will let Councilman Evans elaborate on that. But a big thank you to Mr. Evans for leading the charge on this. It seems, following our meeting and doing a little more research into it, that this could really be a good tool to tackle a lot of the nuisance problems in our neighborhoods and in the town. Many problems that, under the current system, we're not able to address, and there are things, small things, that lead to bigger things in our neighborhoods. So hopefully, that's something that we will have in front of us shortly. Finally, some comments on property taxes and the commuter tax as well. There's no question that the property taxes in the city of Scranton between the three taxing bodies are high, and it's all around Lackawanna County. If you look at surrounding school districts, they're pretty comparable. In the past, if you looked at your tax bill, the school district was and still is by far the largest portion of your tax bill. Then it would be followed by the county and the city. Now the county and the city are pretty comparable because of the recent increases in the city tax. I don't support property tax increases in general, but we have a situation where we have to find revenue somewhere. And in the past, I opposed a commuter tax. The reason why I now support a commuter tax is because I understand that if we don't have one, whether through Act 205 or Act 47, it's going to mean future property tax increases on the residents of Scranton. That is why I've fought vigorously for the commuter tax this time around, when just two years ago I opposed it. And on that issue, I did read an article, this was in the Morning Call newspaper. It was, the headline reads, "Northampton County and Easton squabble over commuter tax." The town of Easton, city of Easton, is a very similar situation with their commuter tax ordinance as the city of Scranton. And this is all, I'll cite it from this article. In 2013, Easton began levying a 1 percent commuter tax on those who work outside of city limits.
Live outside.
Live outside of the city of Easton. In 2014, that was increased to 1.75 percent, and they're looking to increase it again to nearly 2 percent. 2015, Easton is proposing a 1.95 percent tax, which is expected to raise $2 million towards the nearly $5 million owed in pensions. Now, the gist of the article is that the county government is upset with the city government over this tax, which is quite similar to what we see here in Scranton, where nonprofits and government employees that work in the city, that live outside the city, are upset with the city regarding the tax. Now, the county of Northampton is citing the Scranton case, saying that their tax isn't legal. The mayor, Sal Panto of Easton, believes, as I do, that until there's an equal treatment provision in the law, this can occur. What the city of Scranton was trying to do in court is the exact same thing that the city of Easton has done. So I definitely think it's something that we should look into as we continue to explore our options regarding an appeal of the judge's decision, or pursuing a commuter tax through another avenue. And that is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Evans?
Thank you. In response to Marie's question last week, parking meter revenue for 2014 was budgeted at 1.375 million, and through September, we have received $900,000. If this trend continues, we should end up at approximately 1.2 million in revenue. My general feeling that the budget number for 2014 was probably an aggressive one, and V.A. Bolzoni at this point is most likely looking at 1.25 million for 2015 as a realistic budget entry. On the ticket side, $850,000 was budgeted, and through September, $400,000 has been received. Two factors that may have caused this shortfall to date, it was based on an increase in the fine amount that never happened, and the use of Pango probably accounted for less actual tickets being issued, although the use of Pango should have increased the revenue side on the meters. Based on the current trend, we should end up in a year in the range of $520,000 to $540,000. Again, I expect a more realistic budget number for the 2015 budget. Now, the quality of life ordinance, Pat Hinton, as Pat said, Pat Hinton, Pat Rogan, myself met with the mayor of Hazelton and his police chief on Monday, October 6th, in Hazelton. They could not have been more helpful and gracious as our host in our discussion of the quality of life ordinance. Their message to us was clear at that meeting. It is working. We met for well over an hour and they answered every question that we had, every question that we posed. We now have a clearer path toward implementation once Scranton's version is passed. This is a critical tool in the fight against blight, particularly in our neighborhoods. To be able to respond immediately to those quality of life issues like high weeds and grass, and litter and garbage, and dog waste, and indoor furniture on the front porch, snow removal from sidewalks in the winter, this can be a game changer. This ordinance is about what kind of city we want to be. Do we want to be viewed as a city in decline, or a city that still cares about its appearance? We know our financial troubles are well documented, but that is no reason to give up on ourselves. We can be a cleaner, more respectful, and caring city. We can't allow a few that simply don't care to continue to dictate to the many that do. When we had a walking tour with Dossie Coyne in the hill, along the 600 block of Prescott Avenue, it became more apparent than ever. It simply isn't fair to the homeowner that maintains their property to live next door to a property that is littered with trash, with couches on the front porch, and cigarette butts on the sidewalk, because someone who lives there simply doesn't care about their property, their block, or even their neighborhood. This ordinance, if enacted, will bring back accountability for the appearance of this property, or your property, and this is all we can ask for. On another note, I know my fellow councilmen are probably shocked that I did not discuss my favorite subject tonight. With that said, I'd like to take a page out of everyone's favorite children's show, Sesame Street, and say that tonight's motions have been brought to you by the words pension reform and 401K. Thank you.
Mr. McGough?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to also thank President Mark Volk of Lackawanna College and the staff here for allowing us to hold our meetings in their facility. Council received a streetlight request from residents in the 1,000 block of Bunzeli Court on September 22nd. City engineer John Poshus sent council a letter explaining that after evaluation of the court, it was determined that the pole where the streetlight was requested was too close to an existing streetlight in order for it to be effective. DPW personnel trimmed a large tree in the court, allowing backlighting to help with the issue, so we thanked them for that. I'd like to give people an update on the pending Act 47 legislation in Harrisburg, because there seems to be some confusion. This will affect Scranton in what options we will have should the bill pass the House and get signed by Governor Corbett. First, there are equal treatment provisions in the bill, meaning a municipality could not levy an EIT tax solely on commuters. That goes for the Act 205 tax and Act 47. The EIT tax would have to be levied at least equally on residents. The bill, if passed, also does the following. It allows for the business privilege and mercantile tax to be abolished in favor of a payroll preparation tax. The payroll preparation tax must be implemented at a rate not to collect more revenue than had been collected by the business privilege and mercantile tax in the previous year. This would be revenue neutral, but with more business growth, we would see more revenue growth. With court approval, the local service tax could be tripled from $52 to $156 per year. If the city decides to petition the court and levy an Act 47 commuter tax with the equal treatment provision, the city would not be allowed to increase the LST. If the city decided to enact the Act 205 pension tax on both commuters and residents, the LST tax could only be doubled to $104 a year. So just an update on that to help with any confusion. Mrs. Reed, can you please send a letter to the mayor asking for an update on negotiations with the police and fire unions? I'd like to know if any progress has been made, and what the timeline is for a possible conclusion to the negotiations. I'd also like to know if the mayor has begun to formulate a plan for appointing a commission of various stakeholders and leaders to develop a study on a shared services program. This was a recommendation made in Mr. Amoroso's plan. And that is all I have this week. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to address item 5D on the agenda. There seems to be a little bit of confusion as to what that is. The city defaulted when it bankrupted the parking authority, it defaulted on two loans, two bank loans. We are obligated to repay those loans. What this legislation is doing is allowing the parking authority to negotiate a bond to repay what they owe. In the backup, it says the amount is not to exceed $4 million with the, excuse me, with the interest rate not to exceed 7.5 percent. All we are doing with this legislation is resolving to allow, to use the parking revenues, the meter revenues, to repay this debt, this bond that would be taken out. We pledged on these debts, we need to repay them. It's that simple. And they were in litigation, and by agreement, by agreement between the parties, the litigation was put on hold so that we could reach a mutually acceptable agreement, and this is the beginning of that agreement. And that's all.
5B, for introduction and ordinance, sale of tax delinquent property, more commonly known as 540 North Rebecca Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Tax map number, as noted, to Arnold Domes Jr., North Rebecca Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, for the consideration of $650.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second. On the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes haven't, and so move.
5C, for introduction and ordinance, sale of tax delinquent property, more commonly known as 532 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. known as 532 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania. Tax map number, as noted, to James Smith and Denise Smith, 528 Prescott Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1-8510, for the consideration of $1,500.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five D, for introduction and ordinance, approving the issuance of a note by the parking authority of the city of Scranton in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $4 million to finance the 2014 project, authorizing the pledge of the city's on-street meter revenues as security for and the source of payment of the parking authority's 2014 note, authorizing the execution of the pledged documents, authorizing the mayor and officials of the city to take other appropriate action providing for the effectiveness of this ordinance and the severability of certain provisions, and repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts of ordinances.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question.
I would like to say that I agree with Mr. Jack was. I would like to see the terms of the final loan product prior to final passage. I'm assuming that can be done because they're giving us the outline in the ordinance, or at least we can have a better handle on this, because right now, it's up to 15 years, which is a pretty vague term at this point, especially since we have approximately 1.2 million dollars in revenue coming from meters. And will all of that be going towards the loan, or they're only dedicating the amount they need for the actual loan itself? So something I think we need to talk about as this moves forward.
Yes, and I will be voting yes to introduce this. I think I agree with the statements that Mr. McGough made. This is necessary to clean up the mess that was made by the previous counsel, to let the parking authority default on their bonds, and we will suffer from this for the next few years.
All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five E, for introduction and resolution, accepting a donation of $1,250 presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Geisinger Blood Center.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five F, for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of the Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Resource Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1,017,975 for the project to be known as Scranton Cultural Center at Masonic Temple Building Restoration Project located in Scranton, Pennsylvania. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $1,017,975 awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five G, for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving of the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton on behalf of Lackawanna College to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant pursuant to the Pennsylvania Resource Development and Gaming Act in the amount of $1 million for the project to be known as expansion of academic programs and community health projects at Lackawanna College located in Scranton, Pennsylvania. Authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials of the city of Scranton to accept the grant if successful and execute and enter into a local share account grant contract and commitment letter with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to accept and utilize the grant in the amount of $1 million awarded by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for such project.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five H, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept the gift of a 2003 Freightliner Packmaster VIN number, as noted, from the Scranton School District to the city of Scranton Department of Public Works.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five I, for introduction and resolution, appointment of Robert Gatens, 528 Orchard Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 1-8505, as an alternate number-two member of the Board of the Zoning Appeals for the city of Scranton. Mr. Gatens is filling the unexpired term of Joseph Gilhuli, who resigned on July 25, 2014. Mr. Gatens' term will expire on July 1, 2015.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Five J, for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a government obligation contract between Kansas State Bank of Manhattan and the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, for the purchase of four 2015 Mack GU 813 refuse packers for the Department of Public Works.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved. Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 50, 2014, and ordinance creating and establishing special city account number, as noted, entitled Liquid Fuels for the receipt and disbursement of those funds received for this purpose.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass, reading by title.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes haven't, and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of the council number 48, 2014, providing for the acceptance of utility and access easements in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records a deed for the above mentioned easements.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B, for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for adoption, file of the council number 49, 2014, providing for the acceptance of Aspen Drive, Sycamore Lane, and Azalea Way in the Laurelwood subdivision located in the city of Scranton, Pennsylvania, also authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to accept for the sum of $1 and record in the Lackawanna County Recorder of Deeds official records a deed for the above mentioned rights of way.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 85, 2014, accepting a donation of $5,000 from Geisinger Health System presented to the city of Scranton to cover the cost of fireworks at Naught Park.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D, for consideration by the Committee on Finance for Adoption, Resolution Number 86, 2014, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Pennsylvania Fire Recovery Services LLC to provide a fire department services collection reimbursement program for the city of Scranton for the period from September 1, 2014 through August 31, 2018.
What is the recommendation of the chair for the Committee on Finance?
As chairperson for the Committee on Finance, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rogan?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. McGough?
Yes.
I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted. If there is no further business, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned.